Morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, September 6, 2023, regular meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners. It's hereby called "Supporter." If you will, please first join me in a few moments of silence. Now, if you will stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Is that moved?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next item on our agenda are some recognitions, and we will first call on Nancy, I think, for Public Services.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to present Buddy Beecham with his 15 years of service with the town. Buddy came here as a seasoned mechanic looking for a change in careers. His background has been a real asset to the water department, as he's willing to step in and fix and repair anything that needs to be done. Over the years, Buddy has got his C-well, aid distribution, and his lab certification for water treatment. But he's looking at obtaining his backflow tester certification this coming year. Buddy's been talking about retirement here lately, but we're trying to talk him into staying around a little bit. Buddy Beecham. Thank you, Buddy.
(applause). Small token of appreciation. Please stay awhile.[143.44][143.44](laughter).
Distinguished mayor, members of the board, I stand before you today to present a deserving individual who has displayed unwavering dedication and commitment to our community for an impressive 15 years. It is a great honor and privilege I bring to your attention Lieutenant Hayden Pullen, whose remarkable service merits our utmost recognition. Lieutenant Pullen has served as a pillar of strength within Nags Head Fire Rescue, exemplifying the true spirit of public service, leadership, and compassion. Since joining Nags Head Fire Rescue on July 1, 2008, Lieutenant Pullen embarked on a journey of selfless devotion, steadily rising through the ranks to assume the position of fire lieutenant. His remarkable accomplishments and contributions to our community testify to his exemplary character and unwavering commitment to excellence. Throughout his career, Lieutenant Pullen has consistently pursued personal growth, professional development, and demonstrating a relentless pursuit of knowledge and mastery of his craft. Lieutenant Pullen's exceptional firefighting skills coupled with exemplary leadership have earned him the admiration and respect of his supervisors and peers. His unwavering dedication to serving our community has been remarkable. Within our town, he is recognized as an individual who consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty, selflessly putting the needs of others before his own. In addition to his invaluable contributions to the fire department, Lieutenant Pullen is a devoted family man. He resides in Atalat with his beloved wife Tara, and is proud father of two daughters, Kendra, 22, Ainsley, 8, and one son, Ryland, 10. Despite the challenges and responsibilities that come with his diverse roles, Lieutenant Pullen always manages to find time to savor the joys of life, cherishing moments spent with his family, reveling on the beautiful waterways and beaches and camping of our area. Lieutenant Pullen epitomizes the core values of Nags Head Fire Rescue: courage, commitment, and compassion. His selflessness and unwavering dedication to the safety and well-being of our citizens and visitors are true inspiration to us all. Today, with immense pride, I present to you Lieutenant Pullen, an individual whose exceptional service for the past 15 years has left an indelible mark on our community. Hayden.
(applause). I think it's safe to say that for our board, recognizing these great employees is one of our favorite things to do. We really appreciate our folks very much. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation for Diaper Need Awareness Week, which I will read the proclamation, and then a motion will be in order. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families; whereas the latest study from the National Diaper Bank Network reports that one in two families struggle with diaper need, an increase from previous studies done in 2010 and 2017; whereas purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income, making it difficult to obtain a sufficient supply; and whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs; and whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention and may prevent parents from attending work or school, thereby hurting the family's economic prospects and well-being; and whereas the Nags Head community recognizes that diaper need is a public health issue, and that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for our families and community, and improved health for children, thus ensuring that all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential; and whereas the town of Nags Head is proud to be the home to trusted community-based organizations, including the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. We, the Town of Nags Head Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 18 to September 24, 2023, as Diaper Need Awareness Week. And we thank the Children and Youth Partnership, their staff, and donors for their service through CYP's Diaper Bank, and encourage the citizens of our community to support CYP's Diaper Bank, to help ensure that all Dare County children and families have what they need to thrive. Adopted this the sixth day of September, 2023. Having heard the resolution, a motion would be in order.
Is that moved?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation for National Night Out, and I'll call on Chief Hale, if you would like to say a few words about this. Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Annually, the Police Department looks forward to holding our National Night Out. Historically, this event has been going on, this will be the 40th year nationally, and it was put together back in the early 80s, around 1983, when crime rate was skyrocketing throughout the country, and they wanted to build a bond between the communities and the police departments throughout, so not only let the community members know that we're human, that we are not robots, but that information sharing that we rely on from the members of the public. We're not everywhere all the time, so we rely a lot on the public's information to help solve crimes, and to have events to where they can come out and walk around and meet our officers on a personal level and see them not at a traffic stop or an event that has caused chaos in someone's life. It means a lot to us, and I think the community has a great time with it. We have changed ours over the years to Dowdy Park now, since that opened up to give us better access, better visibility from the shoulder of the road. We used to do it and partner with the Ark Church, and we had great events there. And it used to handle in August. We have since decided, they have an alternate date that is the first Tuesday of October, which will be October 3 this year, and we run our event from 5 o'clock to 7 o'clock. Moving to August, October, excuse me, allowed us to dodge thunderstorms and excessive heat to where if the event was outside and we had to move inside, a lot of our vendors that sponsor with us wouldn't be able to display their items. I think we've got 12 to 14 vendors again this year. We do not have the dunk tank this year. The gentleman that had that business got rid of the dunk tank, but we will have bounce houses and a large bounce slide, I'm told, but the dunk tank will not be there for myself for the deputy chief to get into this year, experience that. But we look forward to a great event. We've got hot dogs and hamburgers again that we will be cooking. We look forward to seeing everybody there and hope we have great weather and a great turnout, and we appreciate the town's partnership with the Police Department to sponsor this event and allow funds for us to hold such a great event each year. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. I would just like, on behalf of the board, to thank our department. Y'all do a great job of being visible, being out in the community. It's not just this night, but it's y'all come to community cookouts, you have coffee events, y'all do, I think y'all do a great job. I mean, it's not just because we're a small town, it's because of our staff, and I think y'all do a really great job. And I will ask for the dunk tank back. The mayor will get in the dunk tank if you get it back.
Okay.
So, all right. So we have a proclamation for National Night Out. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program called National Night Out, which is celebrated by communities in August and early October; and whereas the Town of Nags Head, the Nags Head Community Watch Association, and the Nags Head Police Department are celebrating National Night Out on Tuesday, October 3, 2023; and whereas the annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the Town of Nags Head to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts; and whereas the Nags Head Community Watch Association plays a vital role in assisting the Nags Head Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the Town of Nags Head, and is supporting National Night Out 2023 locally; and whereas it is essential that all citizens of the Town of Nags Head be aware of the importance of crime programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drug, and violence in the Town of Nags Head; and whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Therefore, I do hereby call upon all citizens of the Town of Nags Head to join the Nags Head Community Watch Association, the Town of Nags Head Police Department, and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 40th Annual National Night Out on October 3, 2023. Further, let it be resolved that I, Ben Cahoon, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 3, 2023, as National Night Out, in the Town of Nags Head, Dare County, North Carolina. Adopted this the sixth day of September, 2023. Having heard the resolution, a motion would be in order.
Is that moved?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to public comment, and I'll turn it over to Attorney Hobbs.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll open the time for public comment. If anybody would like to make a comment to the board, if you'll come forward, state your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
And I will say that if you're here about, that we do not have any public hearings on the agenda today. If you're here about an item that's later in the agenda, now is the time to speak to that. So if you would offer your comment now, yes, please.
Okay. I might need more than three minutes. I'm trying to keep it short.
Thank you.
I've been in business 46 years.
Your name?
Gail Kowalski, Nags Head Jewelry by Gail. In 46 years, I've got stories that would curl your hair, even if you don't have any. And I won't tell them, but the issue at hand for me is the metal dealers. I think that's number three on the back page, 9F2. Nope, that's a septic report.
F3.
F3. And if I, and I read the information about the concerns, which I totally get, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, the concern is for high-value items like precious metals, jewelry as such, being fenced illegally by people who do not own those items that did in fact steal them, and they're looking to sell them for money to, say, a business like mine or a representative business that we have come in. And I totally get that. I'm not a pawn shop, never want to be, never will be, never intended to be. I have two companies that I work with, it took me decades to find the right companies, because not everybody in the business of buying such items as that and then reselling them does so in an ethical manner. But the two companies that I use, I have researched, the one company I've worked with over 10 years, and in those 10 years, we've never had an issue of any kind of anyone even trying to fence anything. But to address that a little bit, and you know, my judgment's not infallible, the only thing that is, is death and taxes. You can count on those all the time. But in my experience, if you've got a criminal coming in to fence goods, generally speaking, they're much younger, they'll have a handful of gold, such as chains, all tangled up, and they won't be broken. They'll just be all tangled up, they're like, oh, my grandmother gave me this. No, she didn't. And I have caught people like that years ago, before I even knew anything about such things. I mean, I'm talking like 40 years ago, we caught a criminal once. You can tell quite often people who are, that don't own what it is they're trying to sell. They're mainly interested in metal value, because that's the most instant cash they can get. Other jewelry has to be evaluated and determined as to what the value is. I mean, it can happen, but, and there's times when people come in, I mean, we have not had this happen, but another trigger is somebody comes in with an assortment of jewelry of sorts, and you do not hear the stories. You do not hear how Aunt Gertrude gave so-and-so this, and my mother, I got this from, you know, there's always family stories associated with things, and the people that we have come in to buy, they're of a much older age, and they're looking to simplify their lives, deaccession, get rid of things that they've run past their kids or kids don't want. They don't want the silver flatware, the sterling pitcher, I mean, or a lot of the jewelry, the families don't want it. So they're like, it's been laying there, I need to do something. And we've had many clients come in to sell, it could be 40 to 60 people a day when we host these events, that they're, they want to offload things, and they consider it, we've been, it really surprised me the first time, but they consider it a community service, because they, like myself, I have no interest in knowing anything about the internet. They can't sell on the internet, they don't trust the internet. They need a place that they can sell their items, that they're going to get better than pawn prices for it, and that they can trust the situation. We have pre-vetted two companies that do this process right, and we have never, in the 10-plus years, had anyone that was fencing stolen goods. We have never had anyone ever come back and say, you accuse us of buying somebody's stolen items, you know, that, we've just never had it happen, it has never been an issue. And it's really not that hard to tell when somebody shouldn't be selling what they have because they don't own it, because they stole it. I mean, there's some telltale signs. They have no stories, and it's a big tangle of stuff, they're too young to have it, in a sense. I mean, I think the youngest age we generally encounter is about the age of 30. And just one positive example, we had a, an older lady, she was well-known in the town, she shall remain nameless, she had a very nice house up in Martin's Point. She needed a new roof. She did not want to dip into her savings. She said, I don't know if I'll need it for a nursing home down the road. And she needed a new roof, the new roof was going to be $20,000. And she brought in enough stuff that, the first company we dealt with was Beneficial. Beneficial bought the stuff she had, she got enough money to have her new roof put in. She was so happy, she was so grateful. I mean, that's more the kind of situation we see, somebody who truly needs money.
I'm sorry, you've exceeded your three minutes.
I know, I did.
If you could include, please. Thank you.
Clear? Okay. Any questions, feel free to ask me.
Thank you. I think that we'll get to that item fairly shortly, and if you have the liberty to stay, the board may benefit from you being available.
Yeah, I'll be glad to answer any questions I can.
Thank you.
And Steve Romine is here from National Rarities, and he can address a lot of that stuff, too. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Is this the right time to talk about the case?
Well, if you wish.
Yeah.
Three minutes, please.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Steve Romine, local attorney, representing National Rarities, which is the company that Gail wishes to do business with for this special occasion that she has planned. I want to thank Kelly Wyatt and Chief Hale for working with us, we've been back and forth on how to resolve this question. Let me give you a real brief background of some thoughts, and then I'll just reserve time later if you want to ask some additional questions. So essentially, what we have is a business opportunity for the local jeweler to bring in a national company that buys not only jewelry, but other valuable things like paintings and art and stuff like that, a little broader than just jewelry. State Code 66407(c) of North Carolina provides something called a special occasion permit, and this permit is intended to cover this type of situation. So I guess in the past, there've been companies that come in and done business without getting any local permitting. This company is very ethical, they do everything by the book, and so they inquired with the town and went forward, and through that process discovered there wasn't really a procedure in place, even though some of this business may have been occurring in the past. So this occasion, no good deed will go unpunished. But what we're trying to do is find a way or a path forward. So I know the Planning Board took some action recently to prohibit the use altogether, because it's more like pawn brokering, and they were concerned about controlling theft and the fencing of items. Clearly, that's a risk out there, but it's not a large risk, which Gail's seen, not a large risk in what we've seen, although there can be safeguards put in place. So the question we have today for the Commissioners is to, we'd like you to consider, instead of prohibiting this business use, finding a way to regulate it that makes sense under the special occasion permit, and that we could go forward and have this business in the Town of Nags Head with the safeguards in place. And one way that could be done, I mentioned, I talked to Kelly just briefly, was to expand the definition of retail. As the administrator of the UDO, she had to try to find a box that this use went into, and couldn't find that very easily. We believe it's jewelry retail, because, you know, sometimes Gail takes gold in, and she's a goldsmith, but we're not regularly doing these special occasion things where we're buying broad valuables. So it didn't really fit cleanly, and it was her decision that it didn't fit, and therefore she was concerned about protecting the integrity of, the concern about, you know, pawning stuff and going down that road. So there was this question about, well, let's create a prohibited use. So we would ask that we would take that off the table, not do a prohibited use, but find a way to regulate the use, and perhaps the way to do that is expand the definition to retail, so that jewelry retail in Nags Head would include the buying and selling of precious metals and gold and valuables. And I think that might be a broad enough way to fix this, if you're so inclined. That's all I have to say right now. I think I'm probably at my three minutes, but we would clearly like to be able to do this business in town. We're a reputable company. Gail's a reputable company, been there 46 years, and there's a real demand. Evidently, there's a lot of people in the community that really benefit from this. So it'd be a shame to shut it out and not allow it in some fashion, but put safeguards around it so that it works for you guys. And the way that would happen is getting a permit through law enforcement, and then there's some other safeguards put in. Other towns and cities across North Carolina have done that, I think Asheville has done it successfully. So there may be some templates from there we can use for the permitting, if you're so inclined. And I'll stand by for questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll close the time for public comment.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you with five items, and a motion would be in order.
Is that moved?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item F, reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Hope everyone's doing well today, and I'll just give you a brief update on some items that we've been dealing with within the Planning Department. We'll huddle up, and we'll transfer screens quickly. Hopefully, everyone can see this. So just to start out with, we'll talk about what the Planning Board recently accomplished at their August 15 meeting. There were essentially two items that the Planning Board dealt with. One was the discussion of precious metals, which I know we'll get to here shortly. The second item was continued conversation on multifamily, and how to reintegrate that use back into the Unified Development Board. The Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board had a joint workshop in early August, so when the Planning Board met on August 15, that was the first opportunity they had to really discuss what was said at the joint workshop and see how to integrate that into code. Also, at that meeting, staff provided a presentation to the Planning Board on both the vacant and developed lots that currently meet that 26,000-square-foot minimum lot area. We also talked about potentially prohibiting multifamily developments to lots that were adjacent to US 158. So when we put together our list of properties vacant and developed that are 26,000 square feet and adjacent to 158, it was surprising how many properties out there would actually qualify for multifamily development in the C2 district as well, I should add that. I did, if the board is amenable, I did want to discuss some of the highlights that the Planning Board landed on with regard to the multifamily development ordinance. There was consensus that we do not want multifamily development for the purpose of providing additional short-term rental opportunities. There was a consensus to deed restrict all multifamily dwelling units to long-term occupancy or long-term tenancy, and deed restrict as necessary to ensure that at least 60% of those units were dedicated to workforce housing. So at the workshop, we talked about all So at the workshop, we talked about all units being deed restricted for workforce housing. But in this scenario where the Planning Board landed was all units would be deed restricted long-term. At least sixty percent would have an additional deed restriction, let it be for workforce housing. This provides a little flexibility for potential first-time homeowners, elderly, et cetera. The consensus, well, and also as part of that, we're going to have to come up with some really good definitions. Definitions for long-term occupancy, long-term tenancy, workforce housing, the term employed. So that's going to be part of our September conversation at the Planning Board. There was a consensus that workforce housing would not be defined by one salary, and that we wouldn't apply a minimum numbers... A minimum number of hours to be worked relative to workforce housing. So when you look at some of the programs, Vail, Breckenridge, there's a requirement that they work a minimum of thirty hours within the county per week. So we would not do that. We would not apply an hourly standard. It would just simply be that you're employed within Dare County. Consensus that the term "long-term" should be a minimum of ninety-one days. This is from the Vacation Rental Act, where ninety days is kind of the pivot point there. Also, I know some localities landed on thirty-one days. We felt like that was not a long enough timeframe. Ninety-one days would help a lot of our lifeguards and a lot of our summer housing as well. So that was... That was why we landed on the ninety-one. Density is still a concern for the Planning Board. The way the ordinance is written now, you have to have twenty-six thousand square feet of lot area for your first three units, and then for every additional three thousand five hundred square feet of lot area, you can add a unit. When you take from that presentation that had been provided, when you take those vacant lots and you apply that standard, it's surprising how many units you would actually be able to have with that criteria. So it was the consensus by the Planning Board that density is still a concern for them. They did want to explore the possibility of creating two different density standards. One for like the large multifamily developments, and then a different standard for smaller pockets or clusters of multifamily within the town. There was a consensus that there's a preference for townhouse development as opposed to apartment style development. And I know there's been a conversation about providing housing above some of our existing retail establishments. They were interested in knowing more about that, also knowing that septic would be a constraint there, water use could be a constraint, and parking. So doing that analysis to find out if there's any opportunities there. They did acknowledge that potential conversations in the future on accessory dwelling units and duplexes could provide additional opportunities for solutions to the larger housing problem that we're experiencing. It came up that there should be a conversation, perhaps, about business owners purchasing some of these units, and then allowing their seasonal employees to live there. So that could be an opportunity to explore, perhaps, a Food Lion or some other employer. If the multi-housing units were provided, they would purchase those units and then allow their employees to stay there. One of the primary conversations that came up is if any of this comes to fruition, who's going to enforce it? That's a piece that we still need to talk about and flesh that out a little bit more. Architecturally, they did have a conversation about what these multifamily dwelling developments should look like. And it was a desire that any type of multifamily development use our residential design manual to get their architectural design elements. So currently, you have two options. You can use that residential design manual, or you can use Division Two Commercial Design Standards. And it was the consensus that essentially requiring that that residential design be used. Right now, we require commercial developments to get a hundred and fifty architectural design points. In some cases, that still doesn't get us what we want. So do we want to consider requiring a multifamily development to bump those points to maybe a hundred and seventy-five points, just so that we know we're getting more architectural design there? And then it was consensus that, before we get too much further in this, we do need to involve fire department, town engineer, et cetera, to just... Whatever we land on, to run it through a pre-TRC, just to make sure that we're not only looking at zoning-related items and building-related items, but things that our fire department, police department, and town engineer would be interested in as well. So I know that was a little long, but that was the highlights of the... of our last Planning Board meeting with regard to multifamily.
Yes, I do have a question, and then I want to give the board an opportunity to make comment. Thank you.
Was there anything on... Did the Planning Board look at any incentives for a company to come in or a contractor to build multifamily?
It was a brief conversation, but there... We didn't have any tangible outcome in terms of an incentive.
No tangible outcome? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. So in terms of perhaps a lot coverage incentive, or a height incentive, or something like that, we did not land on anything. We didn't determine any incentives.
Thank you. I'm going to sort of give the whole board an opportunity, if they want to make any observations. I'll start with Commissioner Sears.
No... No questions, just want to compliment the Planning Board for their work on this and continual effort to make sure we get it right the first time. Thank you.
Commissioner Cahill?
Sounds like we're making some progress to move along. Look forward to seeing some definitions and so forth. I think that's real important.
Yeah, I think the whole trick is going to be in the definitions. I mean, I think that the rest of it's easy. I think when you finally get down to the definitions, that's where the... That's where the difficulty and the creativity really is going to have to come.
Thank you for the work of staff and also the Planning Board. Sounds like it was a very productive meeting. I do hope or wish that we could revisit the incentives to give a company, a contractor, that could come in and do something. I don't know what those incentives would be, but I wish, I hope that we could maybe talk about that further. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, I know this came up. I don't know if you all reached a decision on any of the properties at Abut one fifty-eight and Abut Highway twelve as well, and what your thoughts were on that. I guess you're still looking into some of that, or...
Yeah, so there were two or three properties that have dual frontage on one fifty-eight and NC twelve. We just acknowledged that those properties are out there, and that as we move forward, we will need to address that, and if those are regulated any differently in terms of access and things of that nature.
Yeah, I did watch the meeting, and it is surprising how many properties there are, especially for redevelopment, and as far as density is concerned, how many units you can put on those properties. But, I mean, I think you guys came up with some great discussions and some great ideas, and I'm in support of a lot of them, I really am. I'd like to thank the Planning Board and all the work.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. I'll just quickly update on a couple of other departmental items. The Board of Adjustment, they did meet on August tenth to hear a variance request for the property at eighty-seven twenty-three South Old Oregon Inlet Road. That was related to a deck that had been constructed without the proper permit, so they did meet on that, and we're currently working on minutes in the order to have that ready. With the Septic Health Advisory Committee, you are going to be hearing an update on that committee shortly, so I will skip over that for now. With regard to the Electric Vehicle Action Plan, there has been a little bit of movement there in terms of where we're at. We've had a conversation about potentially where we're going to locate these EV chargers. We're in the process of getting some estimates to run the electrical to those locations, and then talking about procurement from charge point of the actual equipment. So I hope that your next update in October, we can give you some more concise information on that. And the Dune Management Cost Share Program. So I kind of combined this update with the Cost Share Program as well as Sand Relocation Program, since they run hand in hand. That's going to open up November fourteenth, that's right around the corner, so our staff are working on some educational materials for both sand relocation, to make sure that goes smoother this season, as well as the Cost Share Program, to make sure people understand what it is, who should apply, and what the expectation in terms of stabilization would be, should you participate in that. Lastly, just a quick update on Doughty Park. So our summer markets are now over. We have one last concert, which is actually tonight, if anyone is interested, and our event planner, she's now focusing pretty heavily on our holiday markets. The application for the holiday market opens up on October twelfth at eight AM. Last year, I think it was full in about fifteen minutes, so if anybody's interested, plan on hopping on there, October twelfth, as early as you can. Just wanted to note that the Art and Culture Committee has also started working on winter markets, the tree lighting ceremony, a holiday decorating contest, and the Second Annual Candy Can Hunt. That's all I have for departmental updates.
Would you make brief mention of Whalebone Park and kind of where we are with that?
Sure. Happy to. So as of now, I didn't provide any additional updates for Whalebone Park. There... We do intend to provide a small restroom at Whalebone Park, and hopefully some shade structures. We anticipate getting that underway this fall.
Right, thank you. Mr. Cahill?
Kelly, back to the electric vehicle thing. One thing I learned over the past couple weeks is people that bring electric vehicles to the area need to have done their homework before they come about where they can get them recharged, especially if they're going to rent some of the older facilities. There's... It's definitely a challenge for some people, because I know that Harris Teeter only does Tesla. Brewing Station does have a vehicle charging port that's open during the day. When they're open, you know, if you're a patron there, which I understand. But it's not as easy as some people think, bringing an electric vehicle down here with the needs for it. So whatever thing that we do, whatever station that we put up, it needs to meet the services of basically a broad band of electrical vehicles.
Yeah, interesting. Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. All right, and that brings us to our Septic Health Program update, and Connor Twitty. And former Mayor Bob Mower.
Mayor, would you please report? I'll speak first. I rise to give an update on the Todd D. Kraft Septic Health Initiative Advisory Committee. And I'll only say that one more time, because we call it the Septic Health Advisory Committee. Back when you adopted the Decentralized Wastewater Master Plan, you appointed a committee to investigate a VS three, a voluntary septic subscription service. That committee met, met about three times. We met with... We developed a research agenda, met with septic providers, and in the end decided that it was not a good time for the town to look into a voluntary septic subscription system. Primary reason being that that product already exists in the marketplace, and we did not think the town should be in competition. We also think the existing program is working well, and with the changes that you approved after the adoption of the Decentralized Wastewater Master Plan, they should have a chance to grow. One of the goals of the Decentralized Wastewater Master Plan was to create that committee. A second goal was to create an advisory committee for the Todd D. Kraft Septic Health Initiative, and we took it upon ourselves to become that committee. The members of the committee are Commissioner Kevin Brinkley, Planning Board Member Megan Lambert, myself, former Mayor Bob Edwards, David Herman, who's a community member... May I... Let me get this. Wayne Varilak, who's a community member, and we are staffed by Connor Twitty, the environmental planner, and Kelly Wyatt, your planning director. First thing we did was to adopt a mission statement for the board. Septic Health Advisory Committee will work to ensure the success of the program by providing advice and support to the program through being a channel for public input to the Septic Health Initiative, by reviewing and commenting on existing and proposed Septic Health Initiative programs and initiatives and community outreach measures, and by being advocates for the program both within the town and out in the community. That's the mission of the town. We have been meeting... We've been meeting regularly. We have worked on revised educational... educational materials, as well as educational outreach efforts. We've received updates on the success of the program and how the program is going, and I think you'll be pleased by what you hear from Connor Twitty. And we've reviewed the results. We pushed for a letter going out to high-risk property owners, and we've reviewed the results of those... of that initiative, which has generated a healthy percentage of response from those owners who are in high-risk areas. Some specific outcomes of our meetings. You passed a dewatering ordinance recently, some changes to the dewatering ordinance. That discussion actually started at the Septic Health Initiative, as we were looking at the impact of some dewatering activities on some adjacent septic systems. As I mentioned, we asked the board, and they did send a letter to the high-risk property owners, good percentage of those. And finally, we discussed a series of targets and helped the program expand its targets for education efforts, particularly industrial targets. One name... One group that came up was plumbers. Plumbers had not been approached about it, being educated about the program. Connor has been doing outreach to them. I think he will tell you that that effort has been very successful. We will continue to meet quarterly as long as you'll have us, and continue to, I hope, improve and expand the reach of the Todd D. Kraft Septic Health Initiative. And I'll let Connor speak, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Morning, Mayor, Commissioners. So what I... I'll start with what I just handed you. So as most of you know, or everybody knows, I was out at Doughty for the summer market, handing out different educational items. We thought, you know, you're out shopping, you need a bag, and, you know, that was... We hand out bags, the little stickers, the clings that were in there, pens, cups. Cup... And then I made a little flyer in there as well, just to help give information about the program. We did have, I believe, a good turnout of people coming from the market that did not know about the program. I was able to talk to, you know, people that just were renting houses that didn't know about it. I talked to a couple of realty... or Realtors that were unaware of the program. I had people that lived in town that weren't able, and then some didn't know about it. So it was a good mix, but they were unaware of the new credit amount, too. So that was a good... We had a good response and a good outreach, I think, being at the market and being able to sit down and interact with people. I know during the... So we ended up doing... I know during the, so we ended up doing the markets, we've given, I know we, for the DWMP, it was, they wanted to get like, I think, a thousand giveaways within every year. So far, we've gotten out over 100 bags at the markets. We plan on doing the Realtor Fest, I think it's sometime this month. We've talked about maybe even me having come out to, I think, the National Night Out and then a couple of the other events, just to try to keep, we've talked to, as Mr. Bob said, we talked to plumbers. We've gotten three so far that have taken stickers or clings. Still waiting on a couple of responses. I got to call some more of them that didn't have emails attached to their records, but they've been very, the couple that have taken have thought it was a great idea and then have even kind of given suggestions of items they've thought to add to the sticker that they've come across in their, during their jobs. We did have Brittany from the water building, she went to a conference, then we gave her some pens to put in, I guess, the bags to give out to everybody who attends that convention so that we got those given out as well to, so at least the numbers are getting out there. We did, I did reach out to some realeach companies as well. We had Ms. Megan Vaughn and then OBEX Carolina Vacations and Twitty Respond. So we got about 100 or so clings in rental houses, and then I've given some out while doing inspections as well, when doing rental house inspections especially. So we've had people take those as well. Just to do a quick update on the numbers for the fiscal year of '22, '23, we ended up doing 153 septic inspections between myself and the two inspectors, about a third apiece. We ended up doing 95 credits and eight loans. So I know also during the DWMP, they wanted to talk, expand the water quality sampling. So we did start a little earlier this year. We started in March, where I think in years prior, it wasn't starting until closer to summertime, so we got a couple of extra weeks of data. I've kind of slowed back on that with sand relocation starting up, still sampling the two, two well spots when they're for, for that permit or whatever it would be. And then we do have 17 data loggers coming in. We have two water quality and 15 groundwater level loggers that were also a recommendation of the DWMP. Think that is it? Oh, also, I wanted to thank Ms. Roberta for the NAGS headlines or section she put out. That has actually, that's generated a good number of credits and inspections as well.
Very good. Thank you, Connor. I'm going to poll the board here and see if anybody has comments or questions. I'll start with Commissioner Sanders this time.
No, I'd just like to thank you for all your work. I mean, you guys have done a great job, especially with the water quality and everything. Appreciate you and the former mayor's work on this.
Thank you.
Connor, thank you for your work, seeing you out at the market this summer. I know you made a lot of contacts, inspections, the loans. We're getting, I think we're getting the word out there more and more, and that's a big attribute to you in doing that. So thank you for all your work.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And for those others that volunteer on the committee as well.
Before I address this topic, I do want to speak to the NAGS headlines. That was a really good issue that came out. That was really, that was really well done. Unfortunately, Connor's had to come out of my house a couple of times, so. But, and we're still, and I'm still working on that. But I just have to really compliment the turn you've made in this program in terms of the outreach and education. You clearly have a passion for this. I think we're really lucky to have you in this position because you really seem to really like, you get it, and you seem to like what you're doing. And this, this public outreach and education component is something, and the board talks about it from time to time, is that really being as important as the technical part? And now that we've got that going on, I think this program is just really shining, so I really appreciate everything that everybody's done on this. Commissioner Kane.
Now, I'd like to thank Connor and former mayor Mower, as well as all the members of the committee for the work they've been doing and the ideas that they've been coming up with. Connor, one question for you. Have you reached out to the septic tank installation companies about the program?
I have not since we've got the stickers. I've talked to a couple, like Coastal, I have talked to them about the program, and then working, talked with Jimmy McNeil a lot, and he's kind of directed me and a couple of people to talk to, just, and he's, kind of, I guess I got to thank him, too, because he's big about promoting the program as well. I mean, anybody that he does work within the town that has a conventional system, he's quick to educate them on our program and help get the word out. But I, that is a great idea. I will reach out to more installers and get them, hopefully maybe either give them some clings as well, or at least give them some knowledge about the program if they're unaware.
Excellent, because I think that's an avenue perhaps to incentivize people to go ahead and replace systems and update systems, knowing about the program. And if they become an advocate, while it would help them, beneficial with them for business, it would also benefit the town to replace aging systems. No, but thank you very much. I think a good job by all.
Thanks.
Commissioner Sears.
I can only echo what the rest of the board said. I appreciate your time and your efforts, both of you, as well as the rest of the committee. I think that's a positive looking forward with our septic health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, absolutely.
First of all, Mr. Sears, congratulations on your sign. One of the items that we have talked about is protecting drain fields. Mr. Sears just put two signs at a rental house across from my, across the street from my house telling folks not to drive on his drain field. It's a huge problem townwide. Do it again, as you talk about multifamily, if you go to the DWMP, I think it's the third appendix, is an overview of various types of systems that are in use in the town that go beyond the conventional septic system, everything from LPP systems up to the systems that serve the Holiday Inn Express and the Comfort Inn South. There are good alternatives to, if folks tell you they can't do septic, there are very good alternatives to doing wastewater on structures of all size, and the DWMP is a great resource for that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
That comment, just to raise another one. Connor was asked that you meet with the Property Managers Association to talk about protecting the drain fields. I mean, I see it all the time when people have way too many cars.
That's something that we talked about, I think, in our last Septic Health Committee meeting, is getting more education on that, because I know it is bad, you know, especially, I hate to throw a blanket, you down south, they're a little skinnier lots, but, you know, they do have, I feel like, unless it's a rug dog, you do have a lot of drain fields.
The one thing that occurred to me is I've noticed properties that did have delineation marking their drain fields, they've been pulled up by the people bringing all the cars. So they need to be redelineated and, you know, reinforcing that with the property managers would sure help a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, that's interesting, because I hadn't really thought about this, and I hate to bring up rules, but, you know, where, on sites where drain fields are immediately adjacent to driveways, that'd be a bad idea to require a set of posts or something that was sort of a semi-permanent kind of fixture there to kind of reduce some of that driving off the driveway there. All right, I know the, it's 10 o'clock. I'm going to ask the board to indulge us and dispense with this next item before we take a break, and that is item F3, the discussion of the text amendment, and Kelly Wyatt will call you back up, please.
Okay, so, thank you for having me back up here, and I did want to provide an update on the recent scenario that we heard about this morning from Mr. Romine and Mrs. Gail Kowalski. The chief of police and myself, we were contacted by a precious metal dealer requesting permits to operate their temporary use within the town. Specifically, the group is National Rarities that was mentioned by Mr. Romine and Ms. Kowalski. And they wanted to set up within an existing jewelry shop for several days to essentially purchase jewelry back from the public. As was noted, precious metal dealers are regulated by North Carolina General Statute, Section 66, Article 55. It's a very long section, but it was in your packet for your review, and hopefully you had a chance to look at that. The statute requires that any person engaging in the business of purchasing metals in North Carolina is required to obtain a precious metals permit through the local law enforcement agency. Because they're looking to locate within a shop here in NAGS head, that would mean going through our NAGS head police department. The statute outlines the process, it's fairly extensive, and I think in talking with Chief Hale, it would probably take 15 to 30 days just to go through that process alone. As was noted, the UDO does not contemplate precious metals dealers. However, there is language about what the UDO administrator should do when they're approaching an unlisted use, which precious metal dealers, as I said, is an unlisted use in our code. The statute not only regulates precious metals, it also sets forth regulations for pawn shops, pawn brokers, cash converters, metal and metal dealers, including precious metal businesses. So in review of our, the definitions for these uses, including precious metals, as the UDO administrator, I did find that there was not a similar use within the UDO, and I did inform National Rarities and Mr. Romine that I would be unable to issue a zoning permit for the use. We did talk about how the use was temporary in nature, just a few days, and our UDO does have an avenue for temporary uses, but I can only issue a permit for a temporary use if it's a use allowed within the town. For zoning purposes, when it comes to uses, we typically try to review the use based upon its primary function, not how one entity may operate it. And that is to say, while I understand Mrs. Kowalski has a wonderful business here within the town, and National Rarities is obviously an upstanding business, as much as I would have liked to have said yes, you know, you're okay, based upon that, I did look at it from a broader lens of not, of not just the shop and the business, but the use as a whole. So based upon that, I did let them know that the hesitation was not with them, but rather the use as a whole. Based upon the legislative findings in the statute, it does state that it's acceptable to regulate precious metal dealers, acknowledging that there's oftentimes thefts, disposal of stolen property and other abuses to the citizens where these things are allowed. And he can perhaps speak to it, but Chief Hale did contact some of his peers in other areas within North Carolina, and I believe they did indicate that there has been instances of thefts related to these types of businesses. So based upon that, I did go ahead and put together the staff report to go through the planning board, through the process for a recommendation on how they would like to proceed with these types of uses. They saw this at their August 15th meeting, and again, I had requested that all of the uses, not just precious metal dealers, but all of the uses, including pawn brokers, cash converters, scrap metal, et cetera, be listed as an expressly prohibited use within the town code. I do understand that the Board of Commissioners has received comments concerning the specifics of what National Rarities would like to conduct within the town, not necessarily the concerns associated with precious metals as a whole. And I would say that if the Board of Commissioners are inclined to want to allow what is being proposed by National Rarities and Mrs. Kowalski, that one way that you could look at approaching that would be to more closely define how we look at retail jewelry shops. And as Mr. Romine had said himself, to go ahead and list out what we would feel are appropriate customary uses to a retail jewelry shop, being obviously selling jewelry, but also the appraisal of jewelry, the purchase or buyback of jewelry, and the repair of jewelry. As I, for one, have had a watch repaired at a jewelry shop. So I know that occurs, so just go ahead and tweaking your definition of retail jewelry shop to include those customary accessory uses. That would obviously allow National Rarities and any other business that Ms. Kowalski found appropriate to come into her space and carry out this event that she would like to do. It doesn't negate the need to go ahead and get the approval through the local law enforcement agency, so that would still be required as well. I guess the other option, should the board be inclined, would just be to consider allowing precious metal dealers outright as a principal use and not necessarily as an accessory use to retail jewelry. So that's, that's kind of the update on, Mr. Romine had spelled it out very well also, but how this came to pass and why I took the action that I did, and how I think we could potentially find a middle ground there where if the board were inclined to want to allow this use to occur, we could make that happen.
Thank you, Kelly. Before we open it up to the, to the board, just to clarify where we are, the planning board, having considered this, this would have been on our agenda, under the consent agenda, there wouldn't have been any discussion, and it would have passed to a public hearing next month for, had we adopted it, for a public hearing to alter the ordinance. So this is here not as a public hearing, not as a, as an action item. This is here as a discussion opportunity for the board to provide any additional input should the planning board wish to consider an alternative ordinance and put that on the consent agenda for action in some future month, just so that everybody understands where we, where we are today. So, and I may want the chief up there, too, if you don't mind, chief, because I, I'm going to start with some ques, with a couple of questions of my own, and then before I, before I go to the board. So two or, two or three ways to do this, I guess, and one would be to change the definition for jewelers so they can basically do the kind of thing that's been done. Seems like that would sort of be limited to jewelry and other valuable items like paintings or other things would not be part, not necessarily be part of that mix. Whereas if there are other rarities dealers that come in to that shop, theirs may be a little bit more broad, but they would be perhaps more limited in time-specific if the ordinance contemplated putting those in the ordinance, but perhaps with some kind of limitations on them. So I guess my, my question about sort of the third way is if you put them in the ordinance as permitted uses, like rarity, like a rarities dealer's or precious metal or whatever, however you do that, can you limit that, can you limit that in terms of location? Can you say that can only be locate, co-located with a jeweler? And that that can be limited in terms of time, as in not more than X number of events for not more than the X number of days? So I guess that's really first a Kelly question, which is a, kind of a planning question is how you could construct the ordinance.
And I might need help from Gail and Mr. Romine, but when talking about flatware, paintings, potentially other things that could be coming in, I believe as, as long as it's gold, silver, palladium, et cetera, it would all be considered precious metals. So I think opening it up beyond precious metals, you might be getting into an array of goods that are outside of the boundary of what we're thinking of in terms of this event. So I do think there's, I do think there's a very easy path. So, I do think there's, I do think there's a, a very easy path to allowing precious metals dealers as an accessory use to retail jewelry shops, maybe not to exceed a certain number of days, weeks, et cetera. Looking at it as something other than an accessory use to create a principal use, I guess I, I do have a little bit of pause with that. Obviously, we would, we would have the local law enforcement agency requirements, but in terms of what that would mean for zoning regulations, we really haven't discussed that to date.
I, I get that. I like, and I, I like the accessory use idea. Chief, is there any, in terms of view, if you modified jewelers and what they are allowed to do, then that happens every day that the jewelry stores open. Whereas, if you have an ordinance whereby you will not allow an accessory use to come in for some period of time, that is perhaps a more sporadic. Is there any advantage from a law enforcement standpoint of just like knowing an event is taking place as opposed to sort of the, just sort of the daily, being part of the daily operation?
Knowing events like this that come in, when we were originally contacted, they asked if we had any requirements. And the requirements that I told them we would be looking for was just to keep a, basically a database of who's coming in, what items they had that they sold, and get contact information, just in case we had any large needs or reported items that had been stolen, so we would have somewhere to start from if certain items were missing. The company gladly responded that they already do that, and that is from what I have seen. I've spoken to Asheville Police Department, to the deputy chief out there. They run these regularly, where they, the, as stated earlier, the, the permit has to come from the local law enforcement agency. So, with that permit, we're getting the, the individuals named that's running the company, and anybody that also has a 10% stake in that business or the event that is coming has got to go through us to get a, a separate compliance check. And that all requires fingerprints, photograph, et cetera, that we submit to criminal history through the SBI with. So, once that has come back, that's why the process will take about 30 days for us to get the information, get the print sent off to the SBI, then that comes back. DPS already has all the forms on file that we can put on our own letterhead to issue that permit, that they must hang up within that business when it's operating, and then if they do it again, a yearly event, so to speak, they would just come back and get an updated list. We would run the check again, the initial fee, I believe, of $180 that the SBI requires, and then a $10 fee, local law enforcement requires to do the, the permit. I think it would just be the additional permit charge. You wouldn't run the $180 fee, the way I understand. So, I've gotten some guidance from Asheville Police Department on how they handle it. Just quickly looking at it, it will be somewhat similar of how our taxi cab permits are run. Our Criminal Investigations Division would handle the permits, review everything, bring them before myself for final approval, and then we could issue that permit, as long as everybody is checked off and passed the background, even the 10% stakeholders.
All right. While we have you and Kelly available, I'm gonna go, I'll do it a little different order. I'll go in-board to out-board, so Commissioner Brinkley.
Ms. Gail, just real quick, how many times do you hold these events per year, about?
The bar shows, one or two times.
A year. This is already happening. National Rarities, just a little check on the internet, you can see what such a, a reputable company it is, from what I can gather. I understand the concern about people that have stolen something, going into the business to sell it. I really don't think jewelry by Gail is a place that they, they want to go to sell their stuff. I know it can happen, but I don't, I don't see that being-
Typically, a criminal having stolen things, they know who to go to sell them, and they make money. And I have my concealed carry permit. I don't think it turns on that.
And I, and I certainly see that. She's reputable business owner in the, in the community for many years, and I would like to see a way that we can make this work with all parties involved, you know, having a stake in it, and they're happy with it as well, but I, I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Absolutely. I mean, if I can say, I just, I mean, I learned about the permits through the local law enforcement agency, once they emailed back and we started looking into it, because I'd seen some flyers before and just, you know, as long as they keep a record from the police department side of it of who has come in, and they already do that, then I didn't see, you know, any issues of what, that I learned about the permits that we have to issue in the backgrounds that have to go through, that just costs the state regulations.
Just one other thing, I'm not questioning your interpretation of it at all. That's, that's not, my comments are not a reflection of how you interpret it. I, I certainly understand, understand that, and you followed the UDO. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me poll the board, and then I'll come to you folks, if I may. Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, chief. I like the idea of making it a, an accessory use to an existing business. I also like the idea of prohibiting pawn brokers and so forth as a permitted use in the town. But I, I think the path that I would like to see would be as an accessory use to an existing jewelry store, retail, retail jewelry store, with the definitions that would be associated with that accessory use, which could include more than, you know, rare metals. It could include other things as an accessory use. Many jewelry stores sell a lot more than just jewelry. So, I could see that as an accessory use moving forward.
Thank you.
I would agree.
Commissioner Sears, Commissioner Sanders.
Yeah, I would agree too, and I, I know you do a lot of other business besides just the precious metals as well, so, and, and I understand why everybody did what they did, but yeah, I'm glad it's back up for discussion.
Okay, all right. So, thank you. So, what I, what I'm hearing is kind of a consensus, Kelly, is toward the direction that you were moving, which is as an accessory use with the appropriate definitions and language in there to, to permit this operation, to kind of operation to continue. And before we leave, I will ask the folks who are here if we've missed anything of significance, or if that sounds like a reasonable resolution to this. Now, so you can speak from there, that's fine.
So, I, I think there's some clarity that I need to bring, because the state code outlines the whole process for a precious metal dealer and a special occasion permit. It's, it's all in the code, and that's what Asheville's doing. And it doesn't require a zoning permit. So, what's gotten money here is if we were coming in to open up a retail store, a permanent location, to go to zoning, say, does it fit that use clause or not, and then we have to go through that. This process that's set up by the state code doesn't have anything to do with zoning. It says go to law enforcement, law enforcement has a background, they give you a permit. It says you also have to give a business license. So, that's completely independent process. So, I think if we were not doing anything but precious metals, not the art, the other stuff, there's already a whole provision in Asheville's law, and amending your code wouldn't be necessary. If we want a broadening to allow art and other things that aren't precious metals to find in the state code, then we may want an accessory use to the jewelry store. And we're not against it, that's very beneficial to Gail into, to, so you may need to look at both of those, but for the precious metals alone, you really don't need to amend yourself on that.
Well, if I, if I may, and I'll, I think we have enough clarity. We would need to amend their, their, their ordinance, because while they are regulated by the state, they are not permitted uses under our zoning. So, we would have to amend their zoning to allow them as permitted uses within the town before they could operate within the town.
That's really not how the state code works.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. No, there's no point in, you're, you're welcome to come to the planning board meeting and then their public hearings, so.
That's fine. I appreciate it. And I think the record going is fine with those, but I mean, there is a permanent allowance to the state code.
I understand. Okay. Thank you, sir. Kelly, do y'all need any additional guidance from us?
No, I appreciate the conversation. We'll plan to get this back to the planning board at their, at their September meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And move forward.
All right. Thank you. I think it's time for the board to take about a 10-minute recess. Thank you. The board has returned from it, from its recess. I was, I was reminded to consider during the break, if it pleases the board on the last topic, since it was not on the consent agenda, it would be appropriate if the, if the board is, is interested to add to our, add the public hearing to our next meeting, to our, to our October meeting for consideration of an amendment from the planning board.
I would make that motion in a second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose. Thank you. That brings us to new business, and we'll start with committee reports, and I'll start to my left with Commissioner Sears.
Nothing from the committee.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon.
Nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Okay.
Commissioner Sanders.
I'll send that.
That was fast. All right. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a recommendation of appointment to the Dare County Tourism Board, Attachment G2. And we are asked to appoint a representative for the next two years to the Dare County Tourism Board. Currently, that is Commissioner Sears. I've spoken with Commissioner Sears, and he is willing to continue in that role, unless there's a-
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we reappoint Commissioner-
Second.
Mayor Perdido.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Sears, for your continued service. The next item on our agenda is Item G3, Discussion of a Revision to the License Plate Reader Request. Chief?
Good morning again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here before you today just for a brief update and request of change to our LPR program that was approved for this year's CIP. The approval company that we had went with was the police department of the town owning all of the equipment, and then a yearly fee after for each site that would total close to $11,000 annually after, and it would take us three years to complete the project that we were looking to do, that would be six sites and 12 cameras. Since that time, we've learned of a newer company, Flock Safety, that provides the service with enhanced features not available on the other companies with their software. Their software program and Flock Safety has kind of taken this to a new level for law enforcement. Not only does it capture license plates, read the license plates, this new software that Flock Safety has can read, make in models of vehicles, colors, they can also detect, and you can single out for bumper stickers or window decals. So, seeing some examples, when we met with the company on a Zoom, of searching by that was absolutely amazing, that you could narrow down for vehicles that would be white in color, a Ford, and had bumper stickers or window decals. So, that was pretty amazing, that they can get that specific and narrow it down. With this new company that we're looking at, this would be a lease program. We would not own the, the equipment, where with the previous company, they basically have a shelf life of about five years, so then we'd be going through the process of buying equipment again. This will be a yearly lease per camera, $3,000 per camera. They maintain all the software, the equipment, and everything. We would have no dealings with that. If, if it needed an upgrade for software, they come in, they upgrade it. It requires no electricity. We would not be having to run power from poles to get this. This is operated off solar power, and, which is only needing four hours of south-facing sunlight per day to keep it charged up for hours of operation. We can even, with the new company, get installation, their poles that are DOT breakaway approved for right-of-way, have already been in contact with DOT and, and have an approved encroachment agreement for these to go in there, so we would not need to contact private property owners to see where we could put poles at. And with the, the installation on their poles and equipment comes to a total of about $43,800. That's for all 12 cameras in six locations that we could do in the first year versus having to wait three years with their approved CIP where we own the equipment. After that, it would be a yearly fee that would be $36,000 per year. They operate on a two-year contract. And some highlights of, of the cameras, again, we would be able to search and request access from other law enforcement agencies or private entities that have these cameras in, where we could view data from their cameras. There is a private HOA here in Dare County that have these up for their gated community already, that will allow us, we'll be able to have access to their cameras as well. So, not only is it for law enforcement, private communities could put these up as well and share access with law enforcement. If the camera ever fails over time, this company comes in and replaces it, no questions asked. If it's something outside of normal wear and tear, to if somebody damages it, obviously we would go through for a criminal process to get it, but the replacement of the camera would only be $800 if we had to go through and replace anything that was not covered under wear and tear, or, you know, if we had a vehicle crash that got into a pole, we'd obviously attach it to that crash report that insurance would go through and pay for. Dare County and Camden County are already on contract with these. Pasquotank County is looking to join. Currituck is in the process of signing this agreement within the next month as well. And Southeast Virginia and other numerous locations southwest and west of us already have these cameras up and running, where we would be able to have access to their sites if we requested to do so as well, being that we're far east as we can get. All of our traffic comes from all these other locations that would be passing from those. Another good benefit with this company, they provide the SIM card. We would pay no yearly cellular fee for a SIM card, where we would have to do so with the other company. That's included in their price. And then, this takes a picture based on motion. It would not be what I would call a video, but when it detects motion of it, it picks it up and takes seven to 12 pictures. So, you're gonna get a before, during, and even after, when that camera is, is picked up, motioned by that vehicle for the camera. So, we would get more than just the rear of the vehicle or the front of the vehicle with that license plate on it, so you'd have it approaching, and then strategically where these would be placed at, we could possibly see if they were in a turn lane to, to move on as well because of the numerous photos that it takes. We're able to create custom hot list with this. This is web-based, so the town's IT would have no interaction with it as well. I know with the other company, the IT was gonna have to set up to where we could get the hot files, being that that company was not automatically grandfathered in. So, this is a web-based service that we would just log on into our computers in the car or at the desktop, and then once, if we create a custom hot list, if something triggers that, it's to the MDT or the desktop within 10 to 12 seconds of that vehicle passing. With this, if it was approved for the change, the police department could have four years of all 12 cameras, six locations, for a little bit less than the price if we waited and did this over a three-year period compared to the previous company that we were approved for. So, all in all, I think this is a, a good move for the town and the police department, where we could implement all of our locations at one time, instead of having to wait over that three-year period. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer if y'all have any.
Chief, just to clarify, once we sign a lease, sign this lease agreement, they install, set up, start operating, and we get data.
Yes, sir.
So, so once we sign the lease, it's hands-off until they tell us it's up and ready, and you can start getting your information.
Yes, sir. We own that data with them, so we'll be able to search, do anything that we need to do within that once they're up and running. So, there are parameters in place that we would put in a case number to be able to, to look for vehicles, et cetera, so nobody's just sitting there running. I'm not gonna run your tag to see where you've been going every day, and what time you go to lunch or anything. So, that, that's not how these work. So, we would have to put a case number in, so it holds us accountable as well.
Very good. Thank you. Start, Commissioner Sanders, any questions?
What locations are we looking at? Six locations and 12 cameras?
Yes, sir. We'll be looking at US 64, near the Pirate's Cove Bridge. These are all just, of course, approximate locations, in the area of 12 and Whalebone, near Cohoon's Market in that area. We have US 158 and NC 12, both at Eight Streets. Then we have the 8,000 block of 1243, and then the south end of the 10,400 block of 1243, and that would have all entrance and exits to the town of Naxhead, being able to obtain readings from these cameras.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Sounds like the lease is the way to go. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then, what are the motions that we need to take here?
We would ask the-
We would ask that you approve the amendment to the CIP and authorize the town manager to enter into a multi-year agreement for these cameras.
Can I get a motion to that effect? A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Sounds like a good deal. Sometimes a lease is a good thing. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Items referred to and presentations from the town attorney. Anything, Mr. Hobbs?
No, Mayor. Thank you for letting me work with you today.
Glad to have you here. Thank you. Next would be items referred to and presentations from the town manager, and we have an update on the public services facility. And Mr. Ryan.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Up here on the screen, this is the the base plan that I presented at past meetings to go ahead and give an update to the public services project. Just a really brief review as far as the layout. Over here on the right-hand side of the page, where the cursor is right here, that's our new administration building. Over here towards the center of the site, this is our new fleet facilities and sanitation building. And up here in the left-hand corner, this is the new water distribution building. So the past month, the focus has really been on building construction. And just wanted to go ahead and give you a snapshot of where we were last month and compare that to where we are this month. Starting over here to the right-hand side, this is where we were last month with the administration building. We had some of the exterior framing going up for the structure for our fleet and sanitation building. We were just getting underway with the foundation excavation and for our water distribution building. We were at the very beginning of going ahead with the install of the structural framing. And so what I'd like to do is go building by building to show you where the progress is currently today. I'll start off with the fleet facilities and sanitation building. And what this is, is this is a graphic that represents the foundation, excuse me, the foundation design. The areas that are colored in orange represent those components that have been constructed. Those here in this lightish blue color are components that are currently under construction. And so I just wanted to go ahead and show you some photos. This is a view taken from the southeast corner of the building. And you can see that not only the foundation, but the piers have been constructed along with the bottom portion of the concrete block wall. Moving up to the northeast corner of the building, you can see from this vantage point right here that we have along the eastern third of the building, most of the foundation construction in place. And currently, where we are at is here along the central third of the building. And we've got the foundation poured and the piers scheduled to be poured tomorrow. So this is a rather large building, almost 16,000 square feet. And so the contractor has been approaching this and going ahead and doing the foundation installation in one-third of the overall building length. Moving on to the water distribution building, this is where we've seen the most progress over the past month. What I have up here are the building elevations that we have from the construction plans. What I've highlighted in orange are those components that have been installed over the past month. I've got some pictures that show. We've got the the roof framed up and the ex- the exterior concrete wall towards the rear of the shop portion of the building in place, almost all the way up to the roof line. As we look at the right-side elevation, this has been framed up with the standing sent- standing seam metal roof installed and just waiting for the block installation to occur. Down here for the left-side elevation, you can see we're about halfway up the height of that wall with the concrete block installation. And here on the front elevation, you can see that there has already been some work initiated on the inside of the building. We've got the concrete slab poured for the section where the offices are to be located, and some of the interior wallwork started, which will be the partition between the offices and the shop area. And then lastly, wanted to show the administration building and some of the progress that has been made. Here, we've got the front elevation of the building up top. You can see that we've got all the exterior framing completed, roof trusses in place, and initiating the installation of the metal decking, which I've got shown in one of these other pictures. Also have the interior walls framed up. Here's a a nice vantage point of Nancy's new office. And you can see we've also got some of the sheathing that has been installed on the exterior. Once the metal decking is in place and some of the roof trim work detailed, they'll be able to go ahead and extend that upward to go ahead and fully enclose and encapsulate the exterior building wall. Here's a view from the rear. You can see up top here where the metal decking has been, has started to be installed. And then lastly, from the left-side view or the north-side view of the building, you can see the the progress that has been made over the past month. So to date, we're about 20% complete with the overall project, based upon the the work that's been completed and the materials delivered to the site. We we are on schedule, with the exception of the administration building, which is lagging several weeks behind. But that schedule does not impact the schedule of the other building construction. So when it comes down to it, what we anticipate is the water distribution building may be the first building to be occupied, and the administration building occupied shortly thereafter. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Commissioner Sears?
No questions.
Commissioner Cahoon?
No, very happy to see the progress. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Brinkley?
Thank you for the update. It is very exciting.
Yeah.
Likewise. Looks great. Thank you.
The town manager and I spoke yesterday about the possibility of us taking a tour out there at some point, perhaps, to... Once the, once we could go do that and not be in the way out there and see how, see the progress, it might be nice. We'll think about that in an upcoming meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Training reimbursement policy. Andy?
Yes, thank you. Jan, our human resources director, is going to present this item. It's something that the board had brought up at the July meeting regarding a reimbursement policy for specific training activities, so thank you.
Yeah, so as Andy mentioned, at the request of the board, staff developed a training reimbursement policy and agreement. The purpose of this policy is to recruit training dollars invested in employees that resign shortly after receiving this town-funded training. So I believe you have the policy and the agreement in your pockets, but just at a high level, the reimbursement agreement would be required only if the cost of the training or certification exceeds $2,000 in a training year or if the training is for a position, for a position that the employee is not yet qualified for. And then we do have repayment agreement would be based on a one-year clawback period, and that would be prorated into two segments. You'd have to repay the full amount if you resign within the first six months of the of the training, when the training occurred. And then you'd have to repay 50% of the training cost if you resigned, month seven to 12. With that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
I think I'll start that way. Bob, Commissioner Sanders?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Thank you for your work on adopting this.
Sure.
Commissioner Cahoon?
No, thank you. Good policy.
Commissioner?
Thank you for your work.
No, looks good. Good to us and does exactly, I think, what the board was was seeking here, so thank you. So I believe a motion to adopt this policy.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Discussion of conducting a staffing analysis for the fire department.
Chief Wells is going to give the board an overview of this request. Obviously, this is something that we've talked about since last year's retreat. We did give the board a presentation last year on the the current state of staffing at the fire department and what sort of the recommended levels of staffing would be for a department like ours. We we budgeted for an additional, essentially, 1,000 hours this year for part-time staff to help augment our staffing and reduce some of the overtime that we've been incurring. However, what we're finding is that we probably are not adequately staffed in order to to meet the needs of the department in terms of being able to man a four men, four firefighters per shift at each station. And so we know this is a big item to tackle. We've been discussing how we're going to go about attacking it. What we'd like to do is ask for the board to put together a working group to analyze this in detail. It is a fairly complex scenario. And what I'm looking for is a recommendation to bring back to the board in the spring that would allow us to not only look at the staffing model and different scenarios, but also how we would fund it and phase it in. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Wells.
Thank you.
Good morning. It's good to be back in front of you. In our last fall retreat, we talked about staffing and emergency services staffing. And one of the things we proposed was formation of a working group to evaluate our current staffing levels. In the memo, you will see that we are currently staffed at 24 firefighter personnel per shift, which means about eight personnel per shift at at a station. But once you start pulling away things like leave and time away, you start moving down towards what we call minimum staffing or hard-deck staffing, which is about six. One of the things that we're looking at doing is that that leave amounts to approximately 12% of our annual on-duty staffing. And we're rarely moving above that. We're averaging about six to 6.3, 6.4 firefighters per per day on shift. With our increased response, we're averaging between 1,000 to 1,200 responses per year. It complicates part of the 22 critical tasks that we are required to to do to successfully fight fires. We have alternate duties that we have to do, fire hazard testing, fire inspections, fire flows. We do some limited vehicle maintenance. And all that puts strain on the staff. While we are currently able to fight fires with our response partners, Collington, Hill Devil Hills, we have, we're able to actually man, get to the point where we're at, the 17 people. Problem with that is, is that the response from them comes in phases. It takes about 20 minutes for them to get on scene, so our folks are on scene for 20 minutes trying to accomplish some very critical tasks. So what we're asking for, more than anything, is just a chance to do a deep dive, get into the staffing levels of the fire department, look at different ways that we could staff our department. And what we wanted to do was try to form this stakeholder group, so we could get in there and ask some good questions, go into things like staffing relief, shift relief factors, staffing factors, what would be the appropriate level of staff for a town our size. But we didn't want to do this in a vacuum. We wanted to do this inclusively and try to get as much input as we possibly can from the community, from you, and come back to you with a proposal that is transparent and relevant to our community. So what we're we're asking for is one of the commissioners to to be on the board. We're looking for two NAGS head community members, and we have a couple we can recommend, or we'd be happy to take any recommendations recommendations from the commissioners, and then some of our staff here within the town. Me, Deputy Chief Height, Human Resources Director, Town Manager, Deputy Town Manager. And what we'd like to do is form this tech, form this working group, go through the process, and then come back to you with recommendations for your consideration. And we we hope to get that done within about 120 days, so be happy to ask you, answer any questions.
Would you share with the board the names of those community members that you've?
We have a few in our pocket. One of them was former mayor Bob Mueller. And we've been looking at, I've been thinking about me, Gwen. He's been involved with us in our community risk reduction part, especially our CPR program. And any any other members you would like to suggest?
All right, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sears, any comments or questions? Okay, Commissioner Cahoon?
No, if I think of someone, I'll pass it forward.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley?
Good idea, no.
Okay, thank you. What I would suggest is let the board chew on the names for community members. Those are good ones that you've presented. So let's make, plan to make that appointment next month at our at our October meeting. I have spoken with Commissioner Brinkley about being the commissioner representative. And if the board is is, if that's meets the pleasure of the board, then I think that we would appoint Commissioner Brinkley. Then could I have a motion to that effect?
If I move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to appoint Commissioner Brinkley as the board representative to that group. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate your service. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is consideration of a resolution requesting that the state support federal legislation concerning the National Flood Insurance Program. Andy, do you, did you have anything to speak to this?
This is an item that Donna Creve actually brought to our attention last month. We did not act on it that, at that time, but we have brought it back for your consideration. And it's, it's a request to adopt a resolution that would urge the United States Senate, Congress to reauthorize the National Flood Insurance Program in 2023.
Okay, all right. And I won't read that. It was in the package. I won't read the whereas's. But it does resolve that the NAGS head commissioners adopt this resolution in support of the National Flood Insurance Reauthorization and Reform Act of 2023, as introduced by Senator Menendez, and encourages its enactment by the Senate and the House before September 30th, 2023.
I make that motion?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, board. That brings us to the board of commissioners' agenda, and so I will go to Commissioner Sanders.
No, thank you.
Mr. Brinkley. Commissioner Cahoon?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Sears?
Nothing, it just doesn't.
All right, very good. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's agenda, and we do want to discuss the fall retreat. And I think the manager and his discussions with you talked about the desire of the facilitator to talk with you. And so you'll set those times for for those discussions. I am heartened. This will be, I think, the first time we've used these folks. That I know that they've, they've had interaction with me. I think they're heavily interacting with the town manager in terms of the planning effort. They want to... They want to talk with all of you. There are some other key folks, I think, that they also want to speak with. They want to look at our documents. They want the results of the community survey that's currently underway, and they plan to, I have looked at their work plan, which I'm happy to share with the full board, but what that tells me is that they are on a schedule of consultations with the manager to review those documents, to put together a complete retreat agenda, and they will hold a pre-retreat call with the manager to confirm that everything's ready, and then come to facilitate the retreat. They will also then follow up by producing output from the retreat. They will have another call to confirm the plan for implementation session, and then they will have an implementation session with the staff. So it's a pretty complete package that we're getting from these folks, and I'm pretty excited to see them. And I think, Andy, was there anything else that we might add at this point?
No, I don't think so. The board members all gave me times that they were available to schedule the phone interviews coming up within the next three weeks to early October. So we've got those dates, I just need to get a date from the mayor, and then we're going to start working on putting together an agenda. And the community survey is out there. Right now, we're aware that we've got about 1,060 responses to the survey, which is a fairly good response. We sent out 3,000 surveys in a random sample, so that represents about a third, which I think is significant. And so the consultant will be compiling a report on the survey results. We'll get a copy of that in October, and it'll be presented to the board in November, which would be just a couple of weeks before the retreat. And then we would like to structure part of the retreat discussion around the survey results involving all the departments. And then we'll be talking to board members about other topics the board would like to discuss. So the process is started, and it will be ongoing.
All right. I know Roberta's not here today, so she's going to have to hear this kind of secondhand, but I think on behalf of the board, if we can use our social media and other outlets to make an appeal from the board, a third is good. I think we'd like to have NAGS head great. So if we can just have more response, I mean, just really, just let's make another, you know, social media outreach effort through all of our channels and just try to get those numbers up and hammer on the fact that it's, you know, it does have a closing date that's coming up, and we really want everybody's input, because we are going to use this to plan what the board is going to do.
Every department, I think, has a Facebook page. They need to be putting it on their Facebook page as well.
That's a great, great point. Yeah. Thank you. Very good.
Okay, will do.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. Andy, I thought I recall from yesterday, were we going to have a discussion today about the employee of the year process?
We are going to do that in October.
Okay.
So yes, I talked to the board about our employee of the year process, and Jan and staff have been working on a policy to help the board determine the employee of the year. We're going to present that in October, and then, you know, we'll be working on the employee of the year in November, receiving the nominations.
Okay.
It just sort of formalizes the process a little bit. And one of the things we wanted to solidify with this is that each department would have an employee of the year. That would be the departmental employee of the year, so in addition to having the townwide employee of the year.
I didn't hear that yesterday, and that's one of the things I wanted us to remember, because we talked about that last year.
So the process would sort of spell that out and clarify that.
Very good.
Some of the departments have already been treating it that way, but not all the departments.
Yes. All right. Very good. All right. Thank you. I see no closed sessions. Has that changed since the meeting started?
No change.
Okay. Thank you. Any other business to come before the board?
Mayor, can I ask the chief of police a question? I want some follow-up on from yesterday.
Absolutely. Chief? Oh.
Happy birthday, boss. I love the blue out coming around the corner, but we set this up, I know it's before lunch, but ice cream cake is always good. Hope you have a great day.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Happy birthday, Andy. Very nice.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you, folks, for...
Thank you.
Thank those of you who arranged that. And so a motion to adjourn to ice cream cake would be in order.
移到
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you.